$120,000. The black rubber roof option, I can't remember the name of that product, but it's more than that, maybe $140,000 to $150,000. And then the third option he was recommending is the best is $180,000, $170,000. So it's quite a bit more. So that's kind of some ballpark numbers that we heard. Because I was thinking, when I heard roof, I was thinking maybe $60,000 or $70,000, that type of cost. But after looking into our square footage and what roofing systems are available, those are some of the numbers that were.
Another question. Do we have active leaks right now? Or have they been short-term patched up?
We have, in the fire department, we have a section of roof that has an active leak, yes. In City Hall, it looks to me, the issue that we have, we're having here at City Hall is we have a lot of concrete block above the roof that, you know, is raised. And a lot of the moisture is getting in through the parapet and through the concrete block where it's getting down in and where it's coming out. You can't see it sometimes, and it comes out after rain. As far as an active leak in City Hall, I'm not aware of one, but we have moisture issues. And you can't see under that black rubber to see what's, the boards underneath that, how it, if they're, you know, you, we took some core samples. But yeah, we have some wood damage in our existing roof right now. And some drain issues, like in this corner right here, we knocked out some, where this fell in, like a month or so ago, thinking we had a roof leak. It's right near a drain. And we cannot tell it's directly tied to the drain leaking, but it looks like it's where it's soaked through the concrete masonry block. And it may be coming down through that wall and coming out in different locations of the roof. So that would be what we kind of saw on top of the roof is not an active hole, but more maybe it's absorbed through the block. And that all needs to be covered up to quit all the leaks, keep all the leaks from happening.
Sure.
And there's so many vents, AC units, that probably have not been roofed correctly or patched correctly, repaired when they were replaced, that contribute to the integrity of the problems in the roof.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. The next item for discussion, Mayor, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Chief.
This one, the heavy rain we had last Friday, we had four or five major active leaks. Again, they collected about 10 gallons of water from the roof Friday. So that's how bad it is on that side of the building. Actually, I had taken the bill taken Saturday.
The good news is it's 10 gallons of water out of Bill's system.
The next item is an item to discuss the joint city-county SUCIDA meeting regarding tax increment financing, commonly referred to as a TIF. And that particular joint meeting is scheduled for August 1st at 5:00 PM at the Paul Skowry Library.
Okay, that Judge Collins had moved, had talked with me about that also. And so, give me a little feel of you people, how you feel about meeting with them, okay? All right, I'd like to make one little suggestion, if, to see how you feel about this. The meeting would be on August 1st at the library. I would like to suggest that that be, that be the agenda for us for that meeting and not if you take a recess and come back to City Hall to address different other topics. So I would just like to see how the commission would feel about that.
I'm okay with that.
Pardon?
I'm okay with that.
You're okay?
That's fine with me as of now. I guess if something comes up in a couple of weeks we need to talk about.
Yeah, okay.
I reserve the right to change my mind.
Oh, yeah, everybody got a right change, man. But right now, we, that's, that's okay, all right.
Thank you. The next item on discussion is the abandoned property code. And Mr. Mueller, if you'd come forward, please. Thank you.
I prepared a report, and we put that out in your boxes last week, I think it was Friday. First part, well, I guess in May, you all asked me to come back sometime in July to give you an update on the abandoned property ordinance and general code violations, and specifically our neighborhood outreach meetings. So that's the purpose of this topic. So the first part of the report, we received approximately 28 comments, questions, or suggestions during those meetings. As an overview, those that came and attended said it was very beneficial. They would like the city to do this again. And they also thought that it would be helpful if other departments did it. Because to their knowledge and to my knowledge, this is the first time any department went out and met out into the public and not in a government building like City Hall. And that was done intentionally. Although we did meet at the school a couple of times, and they didn't feel uncomfortable going to a school, where some may feel uncomfortable coming to City Hall. So that was all positive. A lot of the comments and questions, which was nice to hear, wasn't about code enforcement or planning a building. It was just general issues, concerns about their neighborhood, which was a second part of the purpose of why we were there. So I was going to touch on some of those, and that was one, our sanitation division does a great job and needs to be thanked. They wanted to consider a traffic light on Galvest Road and East West Connector on 676. And that's a state right-of-way issue, but these are comments from the citizens that attended. Again, on East West Connector, 676, and Carne Hills subdivision, they wanted some trees as a noise and sound barrier to be considered. They brought up the fact that they were aware that the city has some funds for landscaping in the city based on a violation of a developer, and it's sitting in a pot of money, which is true and accurate because of what the planning commission had done in years past. They wanted sidewalks to be considered on Cardinal Hill Road, because that neighborhood, they don't feel they have a safe way to walk up and down in their neighborhood. Build the aquatic center soon, and it's needed badly. They, the person that spoke, takes their kids elsewhere and feels, and they know of, they do like car polling. One family will go this week, another family will go another week, and they take all the kids to other communities. They wanted to know what was happening with East Frankfurt Park and its pool, and why don't we allow cars to be worked on in the right-of-way? So if you're not in your driveway and you have a flat tire, or if you want to do minor remodeling on your car, they don't want that to happen. And our codes don't enforce that as far as planning building codes. And stray cats, there was one neighborhood that specifically said they have a problem with stray cats and wanted a leash law to be in effect or other more enforcement of So I explained to them that these issues would be presented to you all, and hopefully we can look at them, either change policies, change ordinances, or otherwise, we appreciated their comments and we'll try to address them. As far as my department, there was some specific ones related to us. I tried to put staff notes on those. In the very first meeting, one of the neighbors, citizens, said they wanted a right-turn lane on Hanley Lane, where you enter, where you're leaving Hanley Lane and getting on to US-60 per sales route. They felt that there needed to be a right-turn lane dedicated. And it just so happened that we had a development just on that street and that segment that was connecting to Hanley Lane, which is a tractor supply company. So we ensured that the planning commission's traffic consultant would look at that and determine if one is needed or not. And that way it could be, the cost would be either done by the developer or shared by the developer. But it ended up that the Republican Bank, which is there in the corner, which is now vacant, BE Day utilizes it. We had the traffic consultant address the traffic report as if the bank was open and tractor supplies open. Would there be a need for a right-turn lane or an other mitigation there? And it came back as no. But any much more development on there, other than what, other than a bank, auto sales, boat sales, and a tractor supply company would likely cause it. So the next person in line is likely to have some impact there. But we at least took their concern to heart and addressed it, and didn't want us to have to pay for it. The city had to pay for it, as a developer had a true meaning right to pay for that improvement. They also mentioned that years ago, in tax bills, they used to get a little card, and it had all important city government business phone numbers on it. And I told them that was before my time, but I would be happy to pass it along. And from that meeting on, the fire department gave us a bunch of magnets that they have that type of information. Our department was, needed new business cards, so we, on the back of our business cards have important information, phone numbers on the back. There was no additional cost to have it printed on the back. So that was a win-win. So every employee in our department has that on the back of their cards now. It's not a magnet, but this is a business card. Letters to adjacent property owners. This was emphasized a couple of times, when a subdivision or a development plan comes, we post the property with a sign that says, "Our department is reviewing this for this purpose." That's not an ordinance, it's not a state law, we do that as a policy. But what we don't do is send out adjacent property owner notices, because that's more cost. So if a city of the first class does have a requirement of 500 feet or 300 feet for different types of projects, our rule is strictly the immediate adjacent property owner is not a distance beyond. So with budgetary constraints and understanding that, we're going to propose starting a 300-foot policy, starting in January, and see what kind of impact that has for the next coming budget. But we believe we can absorb that through our current budget. But that's not why we're doing it now, because I want to wait and see, give it six months, basically. And lastly, there's a lot of comments about the same signs. When we have an architectural review board meeting, we put a sign in the person's yard, our office does, and it says, "There's an architectural review board meeting for this property, and here's the date and time." We do that for the Board of Zoning Adjustments, and we do that for the Planning Commission. Not required by any law or ordinance, it's a policy. I started that when I first got here, because it was important. We did it everywhere I've worked, and it was a great thing, and we got a lot of good positive feedback by it. The Code Enforcement Board, however, we've been instructed by former commissions, city commissions, in the past. I've asked at least three different times, if not more, about doing something like this, or putting a letter, a specific notice in the paper of, "These are all the ones that are notice of violations, and here's all the addresses that have citations." And we called it the Scarlet Letter method, and that wasn't received or supported by commissioners in the past. What was interesting was the citizens, it's two different meetings, requested and suggesting we put up some type of sign for our code enforcement meetings. Whether it's just the ones that, we do an ad in the paper for the ones that are cited before the Code Enforcement Board, the actual citations. That's the only notice that's there. But there's no adjacent property owner notice, and there's nothing on the site. So they thought, at least for those, put those on the site. Others wanted it, any notice of violation we weaves, be it a notice of violation for gutters, or all citations. When we issue a citation, they're given 30 days to comply, they comply, and we remove the sign. Those were suggestions that they wanted y'all to consider. So that's it in a nutshell for the neighborhood outreach meeting. The other part of this that you all asked me to bring back is the status of abandoned properties and general code issues. Land Bank Trust was another topic that we've had in the past. Been doing a lot of research on that. There's been a wealth of press with Louisville on this here recently, on the cost of this program to that community, and the positive outcome versus the cost is under debate. And what we've recently met, two weeks ago, I believe, and last week, with the Kentucky Trust, and they're looking at modifying their program to emphasize with Frankfurt and be a partner with our office. And they are basically a land bank trust already, but they haven't been concentrating within our city limits. And so they're looking at that, they're actually taking a tour this past Saturday of a few sites in South Frankfurt. And the ones that are good, that individuals are renovating, and the ones that are on our abandoned urban property list that aren't vacant, that are, have structures but are occupied. So they have invited me, or I've asked, and they said yes, use them as a primary contact. Because I have had owners saying, "I can't maintain it, it was gifted to me, it was in my family. I just want to get rid of it, but I don't want to deal with it, and I don't live here." Well, I can't do anything other than, please call a realtor, because we don't get into that. But now I have a direct link with Kentucky Trust to let them know, and then they'll be happy to communicate with that owner. So it's a step in the right direction. We are rewriting the property maintenance code, dealing with abandoned properties, historic properties, how the two interrelate. It's a difficult task to try to come up with an ordinance that will make everybody happy, because we have citizen comments in our neighborhood that we need to do more with abandoned properties, meaning attack more, do more to get rid of them. We've got historic structures that we need to ensure we give every last hope and chance to save without demolishing them. We have very limited funds in our budget to do a lot of mitigation and renovation or demolition. So all that is being looked at, and I've got, I think of, I know I have a very good foundation of a new ordinance for that, I'm just finalizing it. But we're shooting for August, September, to meet with the Code Enforcement Board, Architectural Review Board, possibly the zoning committee, which is part of the planning commission, and then getting it to you all by October, because it takes two readings, and we need to have it done in December. So that's the tentative schedule, so we'll be seeing it and hearing it more. We are working with South Frankfurt Neighborhood, Neighborhood Association, they're supposed to be giving me some more comments as well on that. And a nuisance board, that is a separate entity as allowed by statute, Kentucky statute that has its liens are at a higher level than a code enforcement board. They have different authorities by statute, but they basically have the same fundamental So I'm working on that, I've got some suggestions. I don't want to disband the Code Enforcement Board, because all the illness that they deal with are not necessarily just nuisance. They deal with other issues that I don't want to, we should not give up and should not write off the books. The governor, as of May of this year, amended these statutes on the nuisance board, and the key change, in my opinion, was abatement costs. When the city goes in and boards up a structure, city goes in and cuts the grass or repairs a roof, that's an abatement measurement. It has the same level as if you demo the structure. Whereas in code enforcement, it's at the bottom, it's higher than all future liens, but not all the ones that are prior. A nuisance ordinance, nuisance board, those liens shoot at the top, just below state and government. So we're working on changing that section of the code. Citywide sweep, we had 350-plus violations, approximately 75%, if not more, have complied or are underway of being fixed and remedied. Very few of those have had to go before the Code Enforcement Board. We are sending a letter to Finance, PVA, and Fred will get a letter as well, on the final list of those that will be triple taxed. Several have gotten to negotiations with the city and agreed to come on a payment plan that were delinquents to, one was successful in an appeal before the Board of Zoning Adjustments put the ordinance. And I think that's about it. So I'll have that file list by the end of the month, if not, I'll have it next week, most likely. But definitely before the end of the month. We happy to answer any questions you may have.
My comment is just on number 28, where it's the post-all code enforcement citations or even notices of violations. Certainly on the Board of Zoning Adjustments, and I could walk around and see when something was posted, you know, or in my neighborhood, as a, just walking around the neighborhood, I can see what's going on. I would support this. I don't know where the rest of the board stands on that, to post for enforcement citations. But I'm just throwing it out there in case the rest of the board has a similar sentiment.
Okay. Commissioner, did you say you wanted?
Yes.
Okay.
I support what Commissioner Turner just said as well. And Gary, I just want to thank you and your staff for taking that time and really getting out into the community and trying to get some information. I showed up for as much as one as I could. But thank you so much, and I think it's pretty good feedback that you and your staff have gotten. And as well, I think number 17 is something to look at as well, to keep Fred going to City's manager, so we don't have to spend money on a search firm.
Yes, okay. Commissioner Wilder?
I'm inclined to support the posting of the signage. In terms of putting everything in the paper, I might, I might feel that's a little, a little much, but I'd be, I think, I think posting signage is pretty reasonable.
For citations.
Yeah. Although I'd also be inclined to, since we're overhauling so much of the code right now, I'd be inclined to make this a piece of that puzzle, and to not just start doing it tomorrow, but to, with, we worked all this stuff out, and then let it be part of the changes that are made.
Maybe drafting an ordinance, that's something that, so that we know that.
That would be, now you planned, as I see here, you were planning to put all these recommendations on it, in a document to us after it's gone through the Architectural Review Board and all that, right?
The, not the 28 recommendations on the front of this, no. The other suggestions, comments that I'm getting, and the ordinances that we're preparing will definitely come before you and the Architectural Review Board. This list of 28 is strictly for you all to consider for future endeavors, but the ones I have control on that don't, that are policy-driven, I'm trying to address those, so that's in my ability.
I believe you get support here and there.
We can do that, that'd be.
Three, four. Commissioner Wilder, go ahead.
If, it's like I say, I'm really glad that we're sending letters to adjacent property owners in regards to new development. I think that's, that's the right thing to do. When it, when it comes to presenting this, sharing this draft ordinance with the Code Enforcement Board and ARB, et cetera, could you, could you keep us in the loop on the dates and times of those? I think I'd like to attend those, just for my information, if possible. And could you share some contact with, some contact information for Kentucky Trust? Just for, you know, just so I can get more information.
Mr. Paul Skowry.
Uh huh.
And the other name is Joe, but I always forget his last name. We communicate by email, and it's Joe something, something.
Wait.
But it's a, he's a long ass guy, young guy, and he's supposed to be getting me his actual contact. I asked him to officially send it to me, so I can say I have something official to forward these individuals to.
Thanks, Gary.
Thank you.
I have this one. Another Commissioner, go ahead. Just for interest, we had seven public meetings. Do you have, can you remember about, what was the, how many people attended that total seven meetings?
Sure. The first one was about 13, and that was in the Cardinal Hills, Inverness area, all the way up to Lyons Drive. Then the second one was all of Silver Lake, Indian Hills, Arnold Ridge, and we had two to three people.
How many?
Two to three.
Okay.
The third one, I gotta look at the map. Third one was Crestwood and the inner parts of Main Street, Rolling Acres, Ringo Drive, and we had two to three. The fourth one, which is the one that I thought we would have the most turnout on, was Thornhill, Home Street area, and Bell Point. And we had two to three. And none of the association members came to that meeting either, which was, I thought was a little surprising. And then our fifth one was Riverbend and US-60 and part of Tanglewood, not Tanglewood, Thistleton. And again, we had, I think, three to four at that one. That one was, actually, we had two, because we had it at the Juniper Hills Golf Course. That was a great location, we had a TV, and we had two individuals. The sixth one was the western, south the most part, the Meadows, Clover, and that, Glenwood, I think it's called Glenwood, it's off of Cardinal, Cardinal Lane. Again, it was two to three. Our last one was the downtown, Tanglewood, north downtown, and the Arlington Heights area, and we had about 12 to 15. So the first and last one, we had the most turnout, and the rest were two to three. We advertise in the paper two to three Sundays, and we try to keep it bare-boned as far as budget-wise. To do this again, I would recommend for whatever department. And we advertise in a website. And we had, we did a presentation to the Optimist Club, and they televised that over Channel 10. So the entire, entire presentation was done on that aspect as well. But for future ones, I think signs at the main entrances of the subdivisions that are being emphasized, just indicating a neighborhood meeting ought to be added, and possibly some flyers at the local schools or churches would help on getting more people to attend.
Well, I.
But that costs money.
I appreciate the fact that you made that effort. And the one I attended, you know, was not well-attended, but the material presented was very good.
Thank you.
And, and even though we don't get a lot, where you can't make people come out.
That's correct.
You can't, but you offered an opportunity, and I did appreciate the time out.
And those, thank you very much.
All right, now, I believe we're down, down to, oh, Commissioner Wilder.
I'm sorry, Mayor. There was a, there was a piece of new business that I, that I deferred to one of the discussion items that I forgot to bring up again. So in regards to the Green Vision joint meeting, a Green Vision joint meeting between the city and the county and the plant board, I was, I was just hoping that we could get just general support for the, for the concept and, and formal direction for our city manager to, who's a member of the Green Vision group, he's, he's aware of.
Could you have, if, if we have this, could we incorporate that with the August 1st meeting, rather than having to come back to a complete separate meeting?
Oh, I would say that I wouldn't have a problem with that. I suspect that the county wouldn't want to, wouldn't want to meet that long. I think they like to keep their meetings in an hour.
Yeah, okay. Let me ask you, Commissioner, he, Commissioner Wilder wanted to get a feel for you guys. Now, would you, are you always supportive of trying to have that green group become to a joint meeting? We haven't had joint meetings, I just like to ban them if I could.
Yeah.
You know, then, Mr. Goon, would you inquire, the county judge, to see if they're, in fact, are they aware?
I think everybody's aware, every body, as in every entity, is aware of it. And this has been discussed within the Green Vision, within the process.
Would you mind finding that?
No, I'd be glad to. I'd be glad to try to nail down a date on it.
And hopefully, it can get my. Yeah, and hopefully it can get, by my personal viewpoint, if we get them both at the same time, like, you know, like we've been here now two and a half. You know, I mean, to our meeting with them, if they, they may not be accustomed to them, but we can teach them a few things.
Say that the goal of the Green Vision meeting is to get, is to get, to handle it within an hour. There's a lot of material to go over, so I think the goal is to shoot for an hour and the practical reality is that it may be closer to two, just to handle, just to handle that material. I'm happy to, I'm happy to try and do it during the August 1st meeting, but for what it's worth it, I'd also be perfectly happy to let it take over any of our, any of our regular meetings as well.
Yeah. All right.
There's a great deal of good subject matter, but it might be lengthy.
Yeah.
I think it might be a lot to digest that and the TIF all at once.
Yeah, okay. All right, I believe we're now down to...
Mayor, if I may, on new business, y'all were talking about fireworks, and I had some information to give you about that as well, if you'd like to hear it tonight.
Let's hear it.
And that is, we sign off on the tent permits and we sign off on the business licenses. I've already been approached by two vendors on a permanent full-time location within a current shopping center within the city limits, and they're asking about signage and availability to do that. So right now, there's nothing to prevent that. If you want to, and my understanding is if they get their business license, let's say, tomorrow, and they lease the space and you adopt a new ordinance or new policies three months from now, they wouldn't be subject to those if they already have a business open and established. So you might want to consider a moratorium on new business licenses for firework vendors or the renewal of those because all the ones that got them got a itinerant merchant business license and renew it next year. Just for something to think about in addition to everything else you're thinking about. And if you want to do a date specific, you know, probably pick June, because we didn't get any applications for tents until after, within the month of June. So just something to consider.
I'd be happy to issue a moratorium. We can always, you know, as long, to give us time to look at this and talk about this, and we can always retract it if, at any time if we feel the need to.
That would be bad. Permanent.
Okay, now we're down to, I'd like someone to make a motion for us going to closed session per KRS 61.8101F regarding personnel. Commissioner May, so moves. Second, Mr. Hedin. All right, call the roll.
Mr. Wilder.
Yes.
Mr. Hedin.
Yes.
Mr. Turner.
Yes.
Mr. May.
Yes.
Yes, so now we will go into closed session.